All right, folks, let's get started. Meeting started at 5 o'clock. We'll rise to the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under universal liberty and justice for all. Anybody has any conflict of interest, just disclose it at the time that it's appropriate. We've got some adjustments to the agenda, Joe.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've got some folks here visiting. They're talking about solid waste hauling. And then after that, we've got general assistance here.
All right.
So with you tonight, with us tonight is Mickey Wayne from Casella, Jerry from Archie's. Came up on the board and had some questions a couple of meetings ago about how do we specifically, how do we know waste is being hauled in? How do we know that waste isn't coming in from town, other towns, in the trucks of commercial haulers? So I invited these folks up to kind of answer that question. And any other questions that you might have.
All right. Yeah, we, this was brought up by a member of the communities. We figured we'd ask you guys to come up here because we never really met you. There was, I don't, there was concerns or just a question of when you come into town, are you coming with a full truck or a half-full truck and dumping at our site? But are you leaving town with dumping, dumping at the next site? Or how does it work? We just...
I mean, I'll speak for myself first. Our trucks are empty before they come back. They have to be empty.
Okay.
And our trucks have tablets on them now. So that when the driver gets in the morning, he takes a tablet and his route's on it with an empty truck. And this is an hour, an hour and a half away from us.
Yep.
Everything you pick up here, we dump at your transfer station. So there's nothing coming from any other town. There's a transfer station right next door that you dump for free at.
Yeah, okay. Sure.
And it would cost us money to dump anything here.
All right.
So everything, everything is, that comes from this, your town goes to your town. And I'm sure it's the same thing with Casella. They have their own transfer stations. They have no reason to dump anything else.
Yeah, I think it definitely was not an accusation. It was more just curious because we don't know how it works. And we're getting ready to revamp our, you know, do some work to our, our transfer station. It's going to be a big overhaul at some point. So we wanted to know exactly how stuff worked.
Good question. To, to, you know, smart question. I would ask the same question if I was a resident.
Because, yeah, I mean, we're also trying to figure out, not just the trash trucks, but folks in neighboring communities. Like it, it's really, it's hard to get a handle on, on, you know, how much waste is going out. Our, our weights are going up. Is that correct? Just, I mean, volume of people and everything.
Do you have stickers that, that was a resident?
Right. Yep, we do.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. Have you noticed that you're selling more stickers to residents? That's why your tonnage went up? Or is it because you have $2 in town? Have you seen an influx, you know, an increase in the tonnage? We haven't looked at that closely, but it hasn't been going on that long that there's been two companies.
Yep.
I did, one of the other questions that came up somewhere was, and you may answer part of it, but you got a tablet in the truck. But how do we, how could the town confirm that you're empty when you start in town? Is there a way we can do that?
Yes, so in a lot of other towns that we pick up and have a zero tip, you guys have a zero tip. The town takes care of it in the taxes. So we dump at the transfer station so we don't have to pay for it when we go somewhere else, right? So in the other towns that we do business with, they'll sell a hauler's license, a waste hauler's license. And that can be $100. So I think one of them that I have is $350. That covers the administration part of it, your office, because there is a little bit of work to do. But this is, there's a certain criteria that we've got to meet to get a waste hauler's license in your town. And it's, I printed off some copies of some examples, but they're, you know, a certain level of insurance. There, it shows that our drivers are DOT compliant. And anybody that's on the road has gone through the physical and is subject to the drug testing. Shows proof of compliance with DEB. What else?
Italian?
Italian. But basically, when you, when you purchase that license, it gives the town some authority over the waste hauler, right? So you can't tell us, we can't pick up trash in your town, but you can tell us, we can't come into your transfer station, right? So then I'm going to eat the disposal. So if you, if you put me on a probationary period and I violate it again, then you can say, okay, well, now you kicked out for three months. Well, that's thousands of dollars to a waste hauler. And we're going to take that trash somewhere else, right? So part of this too, we have to supply the town with a customer list. That way you know who we're picking up. Yeah. Now, you can't just open up one trash bag and see, you know, something from the neighboring town in it and then say, oh, you're in trouble. You know, people up here with camps, whatnot, they might throw something in somebody's dumpster. Sure. But these towns do spot check. So, you know, we dump something in your transfer station, remove a bunch of bags, put them open, check for mail, his addresses. You can try to get a general idea, you know, one bag is in the thing. But if you, if you've got a whole bunch of it, well, something happened somewhere. Yep. So then you can say, you know, we have your customer list. We know where your first stop is when you come into town. We have a rough idea what day you're coming. We know what time you're starting because we give you that information. So you could have your code enforcement guy check our truck, you know? You open the back, nothing with the truck. Yep, you're all good. You know, you could spot check throughout the, there's just ways to keep everybody honest, but, you know, no haul wants that bad of a list, right? Sure. If they do it or we do it, that'd be a terrible representation of our company. So, but that's how we do it in different towns. And I printed out a few copies. So you can, whichever, take a look. This is public information that you can call up online. And there's the list. Now, some towns, they figure $100 is fair. Some like to get a little bit more.
Yeah, Keith. So, I mean, obviously, so we do, as a, as a town, we do require our septic haulers to have a permit through the town. So it's interesting that we've never actually thought about this, this avenue.
Right. This is just like a view, identity for a commercial hauler's on, because this is basically, your ordinance is basically for residents.
Correct. So then I would, you know, for me, I'd wonder, another point of conversation after the fact is you mentioned all the potential requirements that you would have to meet or a haul would have to meet in order to facilitate that permit. Now, obviously, we could offer that. But then I feel like if we're going to haul, if we're going to, this might be kind of contentious, but if we're going to require our license holders and/or, you know, our haulers, septic haulers, trash at this point to meet these standards, and why can't we're not holding our own people accountable to the same kind of similar standards? So just maybe it's a point of contention. And you had another comment that I wanted to go off of, and I don't know what it was. So I will wait until it comes back.
Those things that he's mentioning, all those things that you have to have, you have to have garbage companies, state of Maine.
Correct.
All our guys are drug tested, destiny.
Right.
You have to have DOT. All these things you must have just to, just to have a truck on the road.
Absolutely.
Our drivers have DOT cards. They have to have everything, so.
It's just a way for the town to make sure that you're following your license, right? Because you're supposed to pay employment, drug test somebody before you hire them. So then that's supposed to be in the random pool for a D, to obtain their DOT med card and physical. But, you know, occasionally you have people that do things, I think, right? Small guys or one or two truck guys, whatever. For bigger companies, we have to follow those rules. And we do follow them, but it is a way for the town to make sure that, you know, everything is being done.
Sure.
Your trucks are safe and they're in your neighborhoods. They got the proper people driving them.
My second thing was another came back to me just mentioned, yeah. I think it's more of a hard, maybe it's more for us to look at. If we, if we ask the customer list, I think it's more on us to understand where your customer base is. Maybe unintentionally, maybe you pick up a dumpster outside of septic on the way up here that maybe isn't necessarily in our permitted, you know, plantation or something. So maybe it's just worth us having a look at those customer lists, just understand what's coming in. It may help us constitute.
That's what it's about, transparency.
Right.
Yeah. You understand what we're doing. You understand what you want. Because we have areas that we have trash also that we may come up here and do all your stuff, dump. And currently, we're going back through your town, picking up the cardboard stops, and then we're going home. Because you guys don't want the cardboard dumped out of it. Do you both dump at the Sandy River Plantation dump site and the, the Ransley Plantation dump as well? Or are we the only transfer station in this area that you use?
Casella has Sandy River Plantation Transfer Station.
Yeah, that's good. I was just curious. I haven't been out to those transfer stations in a long time. They're only open a couple days, a few days a week, I think. But I don't know. Mark?
Mark, we're working on it. Ranger resident, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I didn't know, does the Town of Ransley provide these commercial haulers with a list of the areas that we have contracted with? Because not every town in this area has a contract with Ransley to use the transfer station. And a lot of folks from away, you know, whether they're in Sandy River or Lowell, they think they're in Ransley. And I don't know.
Nice and old.
It's dry, all been, any different. And so, like, Ransley Plantation doesn't have a contract with Ransley to use the transfer station. Sandy River, which includes Saddleback and all of that, they don't have a contract with the Town of Ransley. And there's other places that don't. So that was one thing, you know, it wouldn't be your fault if the town never gave you a list of who we're contracting. It would be hard for you to keep it separate. And then with the, given that, the drivers would need to have a rough idea of where the town lines are and know when they're in Sandy River and the Town of Ransley and stuff like that. And so, given that, I was wondering if you folks keep track of, keep any separation, you know, of who hauls from trash in Adams Town, how many loads a month take, or the Dallas Plantation versus the Town of Ransley and stuff? Because the town would like to start generating some better data on where our waste is coming from. Because even the ones that we do have contracts, maybe we're not charging the right amount.
Good guys. Can I stop you just for a second? Mark just said the town wants to generate. Mark doesn't speak for the town, just so you know. Not that we don't want that, but I don't, I don't want you to take that as... No, but knowledge is key, right? You know, even residents would like to know what's going on. Sure. In that customer list, I mean, there could be, you know, if you guys were doing reporting, I mean, there's some towns that like they're forced to state of Maine on their solid waste. And they try to figure out how many yards, how many tons, whatever. You know, we can give you cubic yards. If we have a 10-yard here and a 6-yard here, 2-yard here, that could be on the list. Would be obviously pricing or anything like that on the list. But, I mean, it's no, no different information than you guys running around town saying, okay, this, the cans labeled 8 yards, we have an 8 yard in this problem, and we have a 10 yard over here, you know?
Jerry, you mentioned on your truck, there's a tablet. Is your tablet, is your tablet just like an address, like addresses? Or is it like an actual map, mapping system?
No, it has the address, has, helps map it so they can actually find the tablet.
Okay, so that would be part of ability to obviously differentiate the town lines. I was just wondering, what kind of...
Are you doing Rowware? Are you using Rowware?
I'm not sure the name of it. It just came out, the newest thing. I don't get involved in it.
We, we have the symbolism. We have Rowware.
I mean, obviously, that would help differentiate the town lines.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, that's, and to his point, Mark's point, I mean, you know, I guess we maybe, we don't know exactly the boundaries. We're just thinking, I should have Town of Ransley, Ranger, come here. The other thing to get away from all this is if the town wanted to, then you can say, okay, we're not going to cover the disposal and the taxes. You guys can take the waste somewhere else. And it's going to cost these people more money.
Sure.
That was a question, Mr. Chair, I was going to ask about, do you deal with any towns where you do that? We could put a bit in that for a second. I'd like to read Article 1810, Waste Prohibited in the landfill transfer station website ordinance, just so folks know why we're talking about the boundaries and so forth. It says, "No commercial hauler shall dispose any waste at Ransley Transfer Station that were collected outside the township plantations that contract with the Town of Ransley for use of the transfer station." That's, that's what Mark's referring to. And this, this is the ordinance or the code that kind of backs up what we're...
It'd be nice to have a map that showed all the boundaries of all these areas that you guys cover. So that we could make sure we're not stepping outside of that.
That's great feedback. There's some, some of these that we have to work on together. If we come back to that question about are there communities that either of you work with where they, where you bypass the transfer station?
There is.
Can you explain what that process looks like?
That means the customer has to pay the disposals. That means their rates are going to go up considerably. But it's no longer covered by the taxes. So if you guys said, okay, that budget's where we're going to hold our tax rate, but we're not going to pay for the disposal. You know, sometimes do stuff like that. And then it'd be up to the customer. I'm not saying that's where they should be, but I'm just explaining situations. There are some towns that just don't have the transfer station capacity to do it. So they send you to the landfill direct.
Is there any compensation for that in any towns to the town? In lieu of accepting it at the transfer station?
We've made deals with towns before that they would pay, they look at their books and say, okay, it's costing us $30 a ton. So if you pick up 10 ton in our town and you go dump it, we'll pay them $300. Because if you run it through a transfer station, we've got the labor, we've got the, we've got the wear and tear on our equipment. And then we've got to call a haul that's hauling a transfer station and then have them truck. So we've done things like that in the past too. But there's just, there's a bunch of options, right? It's just what, what you want to do and how you want to please. Mark, did you have something?
Yeah. I, I do not speak for the town, but when we discuss...
No, that, that wasn't a, that wasn't a, it wasn't a scold. I just wanted him to understand that you weren't a member of the...
You'll get a great, better data or a little bit of management and switch. But I was going to, if these folks are in the trash business and we're not, I was just wondering if they could give us any advice on how to collect better data? Not just with the stuff they haul, but just based on what they know about other areas that keep track of how much? I don't know if you deal with other places that have contracts with surrounding towns to use the transfer station and how you would collect information to see...
All the towns do the...
Pay as you go, like the old sell stickers. I think you guys sell stickers now. The second one you have to purchase, it's only $5. The first one, so if you can prove residency in the town or in a plantation that the town has a formal contract with, you get one window sticker. But you have to prove that you're a resident.
You give $5?
For the second one. First one's free. Every two years you get one free.
Just a sticker on your vehicle.
I think in my town, it'd be $50. It's expensive here.
But some, some towns will do like a pay as you throw. So they, they either sell bags for residential. So if you have a user and you have 10 bags and he's got two bags, why should both pay $5, right? So they make them, you throw a lot of waste, so you pay as you throw.
It's always been, it's always been one of those conversations about commercial properties versus residential properties. And the formula of you guys, now they drop off a dumpster from whatever restaurant, I would say that they're facilitating all those individuals versus do an eye. And then you think about contractors, maybe one of them is, probably has the same idea, is only if you look at that permit. Okay, yeah, you came here, what project are you working on? And you can try to verify it off a building permit if it requires one, to understand where that trash is coming from. So I mean, there's a lot of things we could obviously do in-house, but it's a lot of paperwork.
Cool. Bethel, Bethel is a whole new commercial...
Okay.
You guys don't have any scales set up.
Not, that is something we were looking at.
It's something that the board is going to look at as part of the overhaul. They're interested in redesigning the transfer station that's up there currently. And scale has been on, been on a burner here in Ransley for near a decade now. And they're serious, they've got money set aside for it.
Yeah. And I've seen a lot of towns get scales and then it's, it seems like it's just like, they keep charging more and more and more and more. Before they had scales, they would do like by the yard, you know? They estimate the yards. You got two yards, four yards of demo, and they charge it, you know, $20 per yard or something like that to throw demolition debris away. Trash would be pay as you go. You either buy the bag and you don't have to keep track of stickers. So you guys sell bags, you have the color, they have your name on them, whatever. The residents throw them away, but the commercial is different, right? And then to your point with the restaurants and stuff, their tax base is a lot higher.
Yeah, that's right.
Than somebody else. So you guys are covering that. It's just how, how involved do you want to be in the waste business, right? The transfer station is our whole business. And you can spend a lot of money in the transfer station. And you got to get that money back somehow, right?
You know, I say to your point of what you just said, like you think about scales and how you look at the scale of items you bring in. So cubic yards versus a ton are two different units of measure, you know? So you're trying to compare the two. And then if I bring in a, two yards of frigging, excuse me, of fresh fruit trees woods, and you bring in shingles or you bring in bricks, definitely not the same across that weight scale. So we're paying for more in that distribution of X. We may both all pay $100 for that same two, two yards material to go away. But the town's actually going to pay more for one individual versus the...
It depends on how you recycle what you want to get. Because your shingles could be recycled and go to like CPRC or something like that. So then they're going to be cleaned and they're going to go to a several pile and you throw that out. And there's also a cost factor in how you're transporting your waste. Do you do it in roll-off compacters? Are you doing it in open top? Are you doing it in tractor trailers, with push-out trailers? You know, so you get a bigger bag, you buck on transporting the material out. So, you know, it's how many tons a year are you producing? And then try to figure out what scale of transportation you really need.
If you look at Farmington, you're a Farmingtonian in the system. We do the recycling side of the farm. You run the transfer station and people, they pay for this type of bag, you know, it's got a small bag and a large bag. Or what you guys could do if you wanted to was turn over the transfer station to, you know, move the garbage companies to run it. You know, a lot of, a lot of towns do that too. Options where the board don't want to look into it. But you should go to other towns and take a look and see what they do and then make, what works best for you at town.
So that, that's a good suggestion. We've done that with many things. It's always good to look at what other people have already, I don't want to say perfected, but had, had success in it.
Absolutely. It's been a ton of good information.
Yeah.
Another one, so investigation.
Anybody else have anything else?
More to think about than I thought.
Yeah. We really appreciate you guys taking time, your evening to come here and talk to us. It was nice to, nice to meet you. You know, basically, yeah.
Nice to meet you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Safe driving.
Yes.
Nice to meet you all. I see where it is. Nice meeting you.
Hi, Jerry.
Hey, Jerry. Nice to be here.
Thank you guys. I'm here today.
All right. Interesting. Looks like we have a public hearing in the adjustments, correct, Joe?
That's correct.
This is for the general assistance appendices. This is something the state mandates, correct? So we do that once a year.
This is a formal public hearing.
Yeah, we'll open it at 5:22.
In your, in your packets, there's the general assistance ordinance. There's a cover page like this. You're not really mending the verbiage or language in the ordinance. It's really just the dollar amounts in the middle. This, this page is really all you need to do with this ordinance. So if you get into the body of that packet that Tracy put together for us, highlighted where it's changed. So Franklin County, you look at the person in the household, this is the TNA. She's in the end of TNA, what the current A amount is. And then they highlighted it to be updated. So the TNA increased. One person in the household went to made it 78.42, et cetera. And it's B increased. You can see the changes there. They've gone up slightly in all areas. And if C's gone up for Franklin County, housing units. I suppose it's gone up slightly for a non-conference person in the household. Well, the next one, $291. Nice to meet you. See, it increases for each number of people in the household. So this, you can, you can see the items that are highlighted there. They're on the website too. This is my block down the back. This is the ordinance that we use when somebody comes in and asks, you know, if they qualify for general assistance. These are the numbers that we use to look at and make a decision about whether they qualify for their, what we call the amount is. Tracy, does anything you want to add? Go ahead.
No, Joe, you've covered it. It's just a few dollars. It's pretty typical that every year they just raise them just a little tiny bit. So there's really nothing out of the ordinary with this year's versus anybody else's. They had, last year, they had amended the entire ordinance to include, I'm adjusting some of the homelessness and immigration stuff that's happening in the state. But that is really no impact of us. We adopted that verbiage with the new ordinance last year. So the, the intended things is, it's just something we do annually.
Hey, thank you. And there's an action item, I believe, under seven.
Okay.
And reverse, let's see, a commotion.
Any questions from the audience? We'll close the public hearing at 5:25 and take that up under number nine. All right. Public to speak on an agenda. Seeing none, we have updates from boards and committees. Afna Thompson, the chair of the ordinance committee is here tonight. Ms. Thompson.
So I was asked by Tracy to come and give an update, even though I've kind of spent over the last couple of meetings, sorry. And I know there'd be an official capacity, I would have been... I love it for secrets. Start time. Just kidding. So as you know, we usually meet twice a month on the Thursday third, Wednesday. Sometimes scheduling has been a bit tricky for some members, but overall, the committee stays active and engaged. And we've been making steady progress on the sections we were asked to review. Right now, we're focused on two parts of Chapter 38. There are amendments to Chapter 38 zoning, the lighting section 38A2, and the sign section 3810. You're all aware that we recently submitted an amendment for the sign section with a public vote. That mainly cleaned up all the language, removed redundancies, and clears up some of the inconsistencies throughout the chapter or throughout that section. We purposely left out any changes about internally eliminated signs in this round because those tend to be a little more controversial. We didn't want those concerns to overshadow the rest of the cleanup work. So we're continuing to work on that piece separately. And we'll bring a recommendation on that when it's ready. I know at previous meetings I had said that we were kind of hoping for, next annual town meeting, fingers crossed, that is still the plan at this point. As for the lighting section, our focus has been on supporting the dark sky compliance. We thought we were close to wrapping it up or wrapping up the draft work that we had done so far, but then some additional language was suggested by someone who's been involved in the process and a strong advocate for the dark sky standards. We're carefully reviewing that input now to make sure any changes we make fit well with the overall intent and are effective. Since I have the floor, I just wanted to take a moment and say how much I appreciate the committee members. It's a great group to work with. Everyone brings a different background and perspective. So that's been really exciting because it leads to really productive and thoughtful conversations. We're happy to hear any feedback and we'll keep you updated as we move forward on this. I know depending on what happens with the comprehensive plan, we're looking at having to buckle down and start getting some really active work done as, as it's assigned to us from either this board or the planning board. I think those are the two folks that direct the ordinance committee on our path forward.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right, we have some minutes in our packet. We've got the planning board from July 9th, Jordan's committee from August 6th, and also the planning board regular meeting from August 13th. Well, there's our ordinance.
Motion to approve. Minutes is September 2nd. What is elected as meeting?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Motion by Jim, second by Keith, and that passes.
Motion to approve the general assistance appendices for the ordinance for this year.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam. Discussion. All those in favor? That motion passes.
Motion to approve the liquor license for refurbished brew houses and eats. Second.[1759.33]
Motion by Jim, second by Keith, discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion to approve the liquor license for CNC food design, the shed.
By Jim, second by Keith, discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Like the motion to, uh, take thirty three thousand nine hundred ninety two dollars from the airport reserve for the crack repair and markings.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam, discussion, Joe did you want?
This is for the engineering portion of that crack ceiling and striking product that's slated to happen. This summer or early fall, um, we, the way this works is we pay the payment. Contract them and then after that payment's been made clear. Uh, they will help us submit a request for reimbursement to FAA and make the. At the end of the day, so this is all closed out, the town's portion of this is, I think it's two and a half percent of the total project. So we have to pay upfront, but we get reimbursed.
So every, oh, okay, let's get them out back, nice.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Motion passes. Next up, we have an appointment for the Haley Pond ad hoc committee.
To accuse myself from this appointment, please?
It is James Janassi for a one-year term, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Sam, second by Keith, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thanks, I put my hand up, I shouldn't have.
Sorry for moving, we're going a little speedy. He was, it was the only appointment paper in there, so it makes it easier. All right, old business, Route Four study, request and findings slash whole concerns, that's the Highland Overlook Association if anybody's unfamiliar.
Correct. They reached out to me, as you can see in the packet, uh, earlier this month. Follow up from last year to the call, DOT did some work there looking at that group four and now the roads come into it. They made a written recommendation back, or written status report back. Uh, basically saying they were going to put up some new signs about road, side roads entering the roadway, they did not make any changes to the speed limit. Uh, long story short, the DOT is sticking to that determination, there is a letter that. I provided on the table tonight that was provided from DOT to the whole, and there's copies there for the public if you want to see that. Basically affirming that they're going to, um, kind of stay with their original determination. Uh, but if the town and the. Association want to work together to do some traffic calming there on Route Four, DOT S program should work with us on that. Uh, so I'm tonight asking if there's any, the interest from the elected folks to pursue this further.
Jim, quick question, um, it says M dot has resources available. Basically just talking about what they talked about. Up above, I'm assuming for options, yeah, so, all right, I didn't know if there was more online. Didn't mention, or there are other things?
Yeah, they had partnership, partnership agreements similar to what we did for the plastic study. Cost sharing arrangements to look at traffic calming, one of the items that came up was, you know, putting in the. The possibility of extending sidewalks, this is you want to change the landscape so it doesn't feel. Safe to drive fifty or sixty miles an hour, fifty I guess is the speed.
Keith, so you can just remind me, is one of the biggest concerns is as you pull out of the association, is it harder to get onto Route Four, is that kind of one of the? Is that one of the concerns? I don't try to figure out.
Yeah, the line of sight's pretty dense, I'm not sure what.
I just don't know, I mean, it's helped me, I guess, I'm trying to understand, like, when I use those roads, I don't, is there just a line of sight issue as you pull out onto Route Four?
Um, oh, I'm coming down overlook roads, it's not, it's not terrible, um, I think it's more. Like with Linway, the speed, I mean, the speed coming up through that from overlook road to Linway and the passing zones. Um, I've heard that there's been some scary coming out of that driveway, which is pretty blocked, that one, um, it got a lot of. Blind spots, um. I, I mean, fifty is pretty fast, especially since I was just looking today, I mean, you have the passing, dual passing zones coming up towards Linway. And then it immediately changes to forty miles per hour, so coming into town, I can see where, why do we need to have the fifty coming right up to? When you're getting up to the overlook, if you're going to have somebody passing and then you already, I've had to slow down for the overlook to. Not the road, but the viewing to Dallas Hill, um, I could see that being. Helping goes to a smaller speed limit. Coming down, I, I mean, obviously you're coming out of town, um. I mean, I could, I mean, I could see it being forty all the way until you get to Sandy River in honesty, I mean, I don't see why it needs to be so fast, but that's just me.
So they mentioned in their letter, the passing zone closest to town, that because it was only five hundred feet long, I think it's what the distance was that they would consider. Taking that passing zone out, is that correct?
The short one, the first one, the one closest to Sandy River.
But that was like the only thing they'd be willing to do, right? From, based on their studies and everything?
Because you do have businesses, you do have Lynn Lodge coming up there on your right, you do have the farmhouse, um.
And even if we suggested that as a town, they, they've done their own research, they don't feel that anything else needs to be done.
That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
So if the board, if you were interested in pursuing that five hundred foot zone, you could write on that or form a letter saying. We'd like to have that considered for more.
I guess part of me would be, I'm not opposed to, I guess, looking at the speed limit and understanding a reduction possibly, but. I'd like to encourage, maybe this has been discussed before, but rather encourage those roads of concern with those HOAs and everything to look at. Improving either the, if possible, improving the approach to those or out of their road in question and then. Understanding the views, if there's a view concerned, then looking at the, versus between the state and those associations to maybe help. Allow a larger view as you pull onto that main road, I think those are the things we should look at first before we look at speed reductions.
Like, for example, I think one of the scary moments is when you're coming out of Linway, somebody had a scary incident where they're pulling out to turn right. But somebody is coming to pass somebody on the other side coming that way, you know, like. You know, and not seeing that this person is pulling out, and I'm sure it happens all the time. Um, I just heard that as an example, um.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Keith as far as the approaches from the, um, from the associations. Um, if, if you were to pull out and someone was passing somebody that. It, if you're pulling onto a main thoroughfare, that's, that's your job to, to recognize what's going on on the state highway. Um, as far as speed and, um. Coming out of roads, if we were to reduce this, in my mind, we'd have to reduce the bottom of Dodge Pond Hill, the bottom of Cemetery Hill. And a lot of places between Rangely and Aquasic. Uh, Lee Libby's driveway, the entry out of M, uh, the entry, both entrances of M and H, and those are fifty fives, I think.
Terrifying.
Um, so I, I, I don't see a reason for it, especially if the state's, um, done their research and they don't see a reason for it. Um, as far as the entrance is down, I've seen scary things, but it was mostly, in my experience, due to ice, I would encourage. The associations, especially on that side of town, to ask whoever it is that maintains their roads to. To make sure the mouths are adequate, adequately sanded all the time when it's icy, because I almost got T-boned that way. But, but yeah, I don't think it needs to be adjusted and taking away another passing lane headed out of town and that's your last chance for a little while. Get around somebody if they're. If they're put.
But you, but then it's not, because, I mean, you're still like kind of in a town, I mean, I don't see why the passing zones need to exist. Until you get out, you know, outside of skirts or whatever.
What about Leonard, there's the five hundred one and then there's a twelve or fifteen hundred one after that. Yeah, yeah.
Let's be honest, when you're passing, you go above the speed limit.
You have to. Then you have to get back to where you're supposed to be as soon as you can.
I mean, you're not supposed to go above the speed limit.
All right, folks, what's your pleasure, do you want to take the recommendation to DOT or would you like to pursue this further? Sure, of course.
What, what exactly will that entail for the town as far as, I mean, the costs or anything to, I mean, look into more of this, I mean. How much of a pain?
It, it depends on what, uh, what the direction the board would like to take it, so some of the, uh, options that they listed there for village partnership initiatives are. Lighting, sidewalk extensions and then landscape features, gateway treatments. Those are, those are three ways, I think you could do them individually or you could put them all into a package, so it really would depend in terms of construction on how many elements you picked. And, and based on what we saw with Slawsec, I mean, that was, I remember getting feedback on that, that was a. I don't remember exactly, it was close to a hundred thousand dollars for that, for that, just the study, and that didn't result in any construction, so there's a scale. Now the town only paid a, you know, twenty percent of that or something, but maybe it was fifty percent, anyway. There's the, there's the study part of it and then there would be construction, so I think if EPI is fifty percent matched, so the town would have to go up to fifty percent. So just based on that, I would say, you know, you could be in it fifty grand out the door, just to study it.
I wish they were here, I wish Melanie was here, I wish.
I said, uh, just to speak to what you guys both just said, for me, to look at that mechanism then, I would. I'd like to see some really basic conceptual plans then, like to understand how they, how many they look and what it influences, like what that actually entails. And then I think. It warrants further discussion because I think there's a, a, a mass majority of people that may not want to. Uh, go this route to adjust living situation, or mechanisms of, I'm going to say of a few, not everybody's important, but I, I don't want to make a decision based on. The whole community. And those areas of reductions of passing zones or whatever, because I don't know, even for myself, I, I do drive. Like an idiot sometimes, but when you get behind a eighteen wheeler. And going, yeah, I mean, you can't get out from there until you're lucky to walk into Slawsec and get by anybody at that point, so. But that's a selfish thing, but I just think it's more of a, I'd like to see more.
I don't think it's selfish when you live an hour away from Walmart, it's like it is, or the hospital.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just again, if we could see some really basic conceptual. Drawings of just the entryways, understanding what those may look like, obviously, I can, I can visualize a sidewalk, but if we're looking at lighting, if we're looking at. Adjustments to Viewscape or whatever else, and it just warrants the idea of, of seeing those and understanding costs versus, um. I don't want to say benefit because any, a single accident, a single life is far outweighs. A cost, but.
It'd be good, if you, if you want it, it's totally up to you, if you want it, me too, I could reach out to the new planner at DOT and just have a casual conversation about it and see. What that might cost, and maybe I'm off the market fifty grand, but.
They must have some, they must have some renderings of, yeah, what some of that stuff would look like.
Even if it's like, even if they had to take a different, some, somewhere other completely placed totally different and just be like, this is what we could. Put on Linway, so we could put on the overlook road, whatever, just be nice to understand a little bit more detail.
You're right, the whole Aquasic thing, I don't want to go down that road again.
I don't like how there's the comment of, I'm trying to find it, where there hasn't been any, um. Enough accidents to create such a concern of, which is like, why do, you know. These people live here and they're seeing things that we don't see, I, I don't see, they're, from where they're coming from, so I just would hate to not take that into consideration. Of their safety, they're obviously, they're obviously very concerned, they keep pressuring, bringing this up. There, there's got to be something to that, so I'd hate to not follow through, in my opinion.
I can read, if the board would like, I can reach out to the planner, have an initial conversation, that wouldn't cost you anything. I would talk about what options there might be and how, how we might be able to work together. Give you a proposal ahead of budget season, see what that would look like.
So moved, let's, let's see what, if they can get something together for us.
Motion by Jim, second by Keith, for you to reach out, a little more discussion, Mark?
He suggested that, uh, make it seem less rural, you know, that people tend to adjust their driving habits. Uh, maybe it's as simple as a sign that says village zone ahead or something like that, just to increase people's awareness that. You know, there's going to be more activity, you know, from there going forward to the town and that. That might do it.
Good idea, Mark?
I mean, there's a, is there a sign entering, entering Rangely, right, kind of at the base of where I was?
Yeah, there is a, I can't remember, is there, there's a welcome to Rangely sign, right?
Yeah, it's very, I don't know, but maybe, you know.
Well, we still have the conversation prior, we've had it before about the actual radar signs that are up the bookends of town, we're kind of.
Yeah, we're still working on that.
Coming from DOT, I'll check on that.
Yeah, okay. All right, all those in favor? Motion passes. All righty. Um, there's been a, well, an amendment to the select board bylaws, is that true, Joe?
Proposed amendment, since you recently changed the, the beginning time of your meeting from six P M to five P M. If you're on case two, it's very less. Also, the, the time, if you had anything else here you wanted to, to adjust, you know, you treat this as a first reading, as anything else, I, I didn't see anything that really. We still have a nine P M closing time. You know, you could still leave that there, because you may, you may bump into that.
Number six, Chair privileges, can we change that so the chair could do whatever he wants?
Write it up, I'll be all right.
So this is the first reading, the motion approved first reading of the change of the select board bylaws. Motion by Jim, second by Sam, discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, uh, new business, RFPs for the winter sand bid, we have two bids.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Keith, discussion.
What a question, you showed up.
It's supposed to suppress.
Oh, that's even worse. He snuck in. I guess, so Seth, can you personally come and verify that every truck is a true yardage? Expectation. I want scales, I want everything. I want to count grains for sand too.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thanks for coming, Seth.
All right, uh, we have no correspondence, do we, Joe? Um, nothing to be written to record, brings us to the town manager report.
We have all been invited, oops, took that out of order, special town meeting in this room tomorrow, begins at eight A M, moderator is one at seven forty five. That goes from eight A M to eight P M, there are two items on the, on the, for the conference of plan. And the signs that the chair of the committee discussed earlier. Uh, we've all, the elected folks and I have been invited to childcare, Santa ribbon cutting, uh, that is on the twenty seventh at one P M.
Good.
I let Ellen know that I would make you aware of that, I intend to be there. Um, and the November election timeline is listed here, uh, I know some folks are. Probably were expecting more details on that, but the board is still working on other details of that. So November fourth is a special town meeting. And then proposed quarterly meeting, so we've got some feedback on some of the plantations that we could be eighteen works as long as it's not Thursday. Is there a night that we, that works for the board, I know that's a ways out, don't necessarily mean to know now, but if we could know by the next meeting, so we can like that out.
Monday's our meeting, so Monday and Thursday are out.
Yeah, so the seventeenth, so we got eighteen for the nineteenth.
Just saying.
Yeah. I have no conflict as I can think of.
Where are we supposed to be having it?
That hasn't been determined yet, it was here last time, you certainly could host again if you'd like.
Sure.
You want to come back to the date at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any conflict, I don't know if anybody, if everybody's all set, we can schedule it right now, if you'd like.
What was it again, I'm sorry?
Tuesday, the eighteenth work for everybody?
I mean, I don't have no sports until.
So, yeah, we'll make it work.
At five o'clock here or six?
Uh, I've been with soon six, Mr. Chair.
They're traditionally six, right, yeah.
Just a combination, yes.
Sure.
Yep, oh, that's fine.
All right, anything else there, Joe?
Uh, financials, I believe you're pending those for your next meeting, though. In this one.
All right. Anybody have any select board communication?
Just because Joe had mentioned the childcare center, and it's been a conversation we've had a couple of times, Sam and I. Sam, I did, I did learn that they will have a buzzer system, just like the school does, for access.
Good.
And then down the road, they plan on having a receptionist or whatever. After, but they'll have somebody that monitors that, that system.
I would, I would think that a buzzer system is probably required.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that I know, but I would guess.
Correct. So, thanks.
Anybody has children that they're planning to enroll there?
Yes.
Same dude?
What she's saying? Hey, dog, so you did here.
Anybody have anything else under select board communication? All right, well, we have a couple of executive sessions. I'll Terry motion.
With the motion enter into executive session, MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056C, acquisition of real estate or economic.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam. Discussion, all those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Athana, thank you, Mark.
Thank you all.
All right, folks, we're coming out of executive session at 6:15 p.m.
I'd like to make a motion for the town manager to sign a PNS on a certain parcel of property.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam. Discussion, all those in favor? Motion passes.
And I'd also like to schedule a special board of selectmen meeting on the 29th at 5:00 p.m. with a public hearing follow.
Second.
Jim's motion, second by Sam. Discussion, all those in favor? That motion passes.
If you make a motion enter into executive session, MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056F, discussion of confidential records.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam, all those in favor? Motion passes. All right, folks, we are out of executive session at 6:24 p.m.
I'd like to make a motion for the town to cut a check to M&amp;H for $82,712 for progress payment of the, of the Aquasic boat ramp.
Motion by Jim, second by Keith. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Only one thing. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Jim, second by Sam, all those in favor? Motion passed, thank you, everybody.